We can, and so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We appreciate everybody being here tonight with us. We've got full council, glad everyone can make it. And to begin, you know what, we'll ask, I forgot to ask, who said the prayer last? We'll start right back over with Councilman Boozabark if he's willing.
Sure.
And then we'll have a pledge of allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, grateful this day to gather together as a city council and citizens of Roosevelt City. We're grateful for this city and we're grateful for the citizens herein. We hope and pray they spirit be with us as we make decisions concerning the citizens in Roosevelt City. We're grateful for the service that our citizens give. We're grateful for the employees that provide many of the services for people within our city. We're grateful for those that serve in the military and the armed forces and as well as our local police and fire. We're grateful for their services and helping keep us safe. We're grateful for this country we live in and the freedoms we enjoy and hope and pray that we'll always have them to be with us. We're grateful to thee and love thee and we say this name by thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with which all are just.
All right, we have amendments from two meetings. We had a, we have our November seventh meeting and then also the November sixteenth. We had a special meeting to approve the leases for the vehicles. Any comments to those?
There were three typos and one note that was left in. I'd met with Sunshine earlier today and asked that she correct those, so that's all I had.
Okay.
Who else had it?
Any other amendments or corrections?
Yeah, we improved the minutes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman White, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is unanimous. We do have our public comment period at this time. Anybody in the, well, in the audience, I guess, it's not a real big audience, but anybody here that would like to address the council can do so. You can take up to three minutes. Are there any here that would like to take that opportunity? Seeing none, we'll move forward with our meeting. Just a reminder, for those that are watching or here, if you'd like to make a comment but are unable to attend any meeting, please consider emailing your comment to citycouncil@rolevelt city dot com. Is that why that was highlighted?
Oh, I just thought about the agenda, I didn't realize we had it.
I'm just kidding. I think it's important to let the public know. Committee appointments. I don't think we have any tonight, do we? Recognizations, well, I know our city manager has a few things tonight, so we'll turn them over to Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two different recognitions we'd like to do tonight. First, we would like to, as a staff, we're going to do two separate things. As a staff, we'd like to thank Councilman Flower for serving the city here and we have a jacket. We'd like to present him.
That's nice.
Thank you.
You're a person.
What's that mean?
Tell me what that means. I was gonna say, good luck. You said.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And then we are inviting you back later because we have a lot of council. We definitely wanted to give that to Councilman Flower. Thank you. And then one other recognition we have, we have our witcher party tomorrow night where we do our longevity awards. However, I felt it appropriate to read those longevity awards, just the individuals and the timeframe. So the public hears of some of the great employees that have been dedicated to the city for such a long, much time. So our longevity awards for this year, we have Dusty Anderton, our interim culinary water manager, five years. Rose Potts, animal shelter manager, five years. Councilman David Baird, five years. Durant Harrison, police officer, ten years. Sean Denver, police officer, fifteen years. Tracy TJ Bird, police sergeant, fifteen years. Dean Johnson, our building official, fifteen years. Drew Echler, our planning zoning manager, twenty years. And then Clyde Stansfield, our streets manager, twenty-five years.
Wow.
So you've got some really good longevity awards this year and I just wanted to go on the public record to recognize those individuals for their long time serving here.
Thank you. Happy to serve the block. How did you get five years and I didn't get five years?
I keep track.
I'm sorry, I was checking. We got elected the same date.
He probably have.
Day.
He probably have eight years.
They are heard five years.
I think he's longer though with city council and stuff.
Yeah.
So he's in the in-between five and ten, bro.
Goodness, don't remind me.
Ten and fifteen.
Thank you. Municipal election canvas, twenty twenty-three. The moment we've all been waiting for. Rhonda, or Sunshine, were you going to?
I do not think you did vote for that or not.
Give us the results.
Okay. So what we have up on the screen here is just the summary of all the election results for Roosevelt City districts. We have four, four, five districts in Roosevelt. Obviously, the council race is not districted. The districts relate more to water. So this summary includes all of those. It shows your total number of votes. It shows which council member or candidate, I should say, received how many votes. We've had Dawn receiving five hundred and forty-five, Audrey Gibbres received five hundred and three, Cody Allen got four hundred and forty-seven, I'm sorry, four hundred and seventy-seven. And Rowdy Flower got three hundred and ninety-four votes. Which in total, one thousand nine hundred and nineteen votes. We did have two ballots that were submitted by Roosevelt City residents that were spoiled, which means they were damaged beyond being able to be counted. Those would be included in the twenty that were contested. Basically, the signatures couldn't be verified. What happens then is the county reaches out to those people with those ballots. Does it say, we can't verify your signature? Would you like to come in, do an affidavit, this person, and cast a vote? Ryan, does it say eleven were able to be, in that email? Eleven were able to be fixed and nine were not able to be fixed. So nine votes from residents were missed because of bad signatures.
And obviously, they accepted some that were, well, they voted one or two because.
You're not required to, just because you can't vote for your seats, doesn't mean you're required to vote in all three seats.
Excellent. Quick question, were the votes hand counted?
No.
Well, that's surprising to me.
No, it was machine counted results. I do shame counting issues.
Oh, goodness. Man, I've been touting that we hand count our ballots because I've seen us hand counting.
So the governor, House Bill two thousand and one, because of Senate District Two being a special election, that's why our election date was changed this year. And also as a part of that, you should, I guess, declaration saying that counties do run a municipal elections for this election cycle.
Oh, I see.
Because things were changing at the last minute, they figured that counties were able to handle that. I actually felt it went very smoothly. I was really happy with participation from the county and how they involved us in the equipment testing process and accounting process. From then, I got to be there for a large portion of that. But yeah, they were required to do that this year.
Okay, excellent. Well, now I have to set the record straight, at least for this year.
Yes.
So, well, thank you. Any questions? All right, appreciate that.
So we need a motion, please?
So we will need a motion to actually canvass the election.
Do we need to go in any special?
No.
Canvassing group? We just need to approve the?
Yeah, the city council is our board of canvassers, so unless I'm incorrect, we don't need to, you know, you don't need to move into a separate board like you would for a house committee or anything like that. You can just have a motion to approve the election results.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman White.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Baird, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll accept the election results and congratulations to those that, to the new councilman, council lady, and to those that secure their seats. Okay, let's move on to the next item. We have, all right, I have three people on here, Josh, who do you want me to? Newshank County Water Conservancy District Cathodic Protection Proposal.
And we also do have pipeline complaints here from the Shank County Water Conservancy District who can help answer any questions. This is a fairly straightforward request on behalf of the council. So there was a recent report done on the sandlot pipeline and the cathodic protection is near complete failure. It's in very, very poor shape. And so we met with Water Conservancy District about what our options are. We need to do something ASAP. This protection, we have a couple options. We can try and go get a loan. Oh, let me check. In two thousand and eleven, we entered into agreement with Water Conservancy District for this pipeline. And it doesn't include the O M M and the repair if it ever is damaged. So it's an O M M and then maintenance as well and replacement as well. So we go into the contract, make sure that that was our responsibility, and it is. And we have approximately seventy percent is the city's responsibility. The other thirty percent is Moon Lake Electric.
Moon Lake Water Users.
Moon Lake Water Users.
You're okay.
Moon Lake Water Users is the other thirty percent. So with this failing, we are responsible for seventy percent of the cost to do this. Talking with Clyde, we don't have any secure numbers right now, but we're estimating approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Three, three hundred to four hundred thousand.
For the full project.
For the full project.
For the full project, and we have seventy percent of that that is our responsibility. It would take a while to get this through C I B or secure other sources. We could bond for it. Talking with our finance director, Rhonda, the recommendation from staff that this is one where we could get into some of our reserves to cover this cost as it is an emergency. Something that honestly, with the incredibly poor shape that this system is in, we are at a critical stage where it does need to be fixed. We have Kirby here can answer some technical questions as well as Ryan Clayber and of course Clyde is here as well. But we have reviewed the contract. It is our responsibility, approximately seventy percent. So tonight, the request from the council is to put this on our next agenda to open and amend the budget. But that would give Clyde the go-ahead and he can start getting the process started so we can fix this, this pipeline due to the incredibly poor condition it's in.
So you said three to four hundred thousand, so that'd be two hundred and ten to two hundred and eighty thousand, which is seventy percent?
Yes.
So my question is, when will we have solid numbers?
As quick as I know how we're going to proceed forth with it, I can reach to the more solid numbers. Bowens and Collins has gotten, they've went and that's who's doing the work for the Conservancy District in behalf of it. They've went out and gotten three different type of well drillers to be able to tell us who can drill those. Each one of them, all three of them are in that ballpark area. The only thing that they will not guarantee is if they hit hard rock, it goes into a cost plus at that time. But we've tried to estimate a little bit high.
The cathodic protections need to be drilled in?
We're gonna go to, we're gonna go to an impressed system instead of the system that's currently there. The system that was put in, but the drill reclamation and the central Utah knows. It was more of an anode system and you had anode beds that throughout it. The impressed system was there at the time. I'm not sure what was the reason. It doesn't really matter. At this point, we're here, the anodes though have seemed to have deteriorated faster than what was ever thought that they would. So in order to do that, right now, you have multiple anode beds down through it by going to an impressed system. And you might pay a little bit at the beginning here. In order to go with an impressed system, you put two wells in and now you have two points of protection. And in actuality, if like if one well happened to go out and you needed to do something, you could turn up the catholics on the other well and still give you protection unlike what we don't have.
So they, and I understand that anodes pretty well, I mean, rowdy well too. Working in the, on the gas industry, on the anode beds and they're testing, they're not testing well.
No, they were actually testing below, about the bottom third pipeline. They, there was numbers less than two years ago. Those numbers have depleted completely.
Okay, so do we have any damage to the pipe yet?
Yes, and that's why, that's why the Conservancy District is probably concerned. Last year, was it about eighteen months ago, they ended up with a leak that was up by the state road turnout. Just whose houses, how do I explain it to these people where that is?
North Cove Road.
North Cove Road, Turkey. On that one, there's a cement building on the right-hand side there. At that one, we actually had an anode bed that was, that's when we actually started looking at the anode beds harder and not knowing if they were really doing what they were designed to do. And we've had a leak there. Yes, we fixed the leak.
Is somebody testing those stations on a regular basis?
Yes. Yeah. When is the timeframe? Because of, because of not wanting to have issues and because of the high pressure that's on this end of the pipeline, which is extremely high, once the anodes or once the pipeline started to sustain damage, you can't repair that damage. The one thing you can do though is if we catch it quick enough, we really believe Bowens and Collins and everybody that we've talked to has really believes that you can stop what's already happened from getting any worse. And that's what our intention is, is just to, so we would rather be done with it and have it back in service by four to six months. Short, really short term.
One of the, and this is just a, this is a personal concern that I have with the pipeline in general. And not to resurface any, anything there, but when we asked for a turnout on that pipeline, that was a very difficult process that we faced getting that done. Where we didn't feel like we had much representation on the board. As we're paying, you know, seventy, seventy percent of the costs, not only the ongoing maintenance, but then these costs, how does that look in the future for us, you know, if we need another turnout? And how do we, you know, we're paying the majority of those costs, how do we work with the Conservancy District in the future to make sure that we can get those things done without feeling like we're, we're in between a rough and a hard spot?
I think the easiest thing to do, if you want to put a vault in, as you come in, you just say, here, let's do this and let's make sure we cover everything we need. There was quite a bit of, pretty conversation went back and forth, you might say, in that one. And seems like a couple of times, if, I mean, you just want to make one quick example, Mayor, okay? We had like one, we asked about putting in some extra valves. And we were told, well, we don't want the valve, but the valve was needed. We needed a valve halfway in between that system. And so we wanted to put a bypass and we were told, well, nobody wants to pay for bypass.
Was that really, was that early on?
Yeah, and but then you end up paying for the bypass anyway because you, we have to have a bypass and why would we want a valve to? The valve was no good without a bypass.
Is that in the vault or is that in the original line?
The vault, it's in the vault. We actually went and put it in the vault. Just the best thing to do on that is just come, I don't know, let's just, just say, this is what we'd like to do.
Yeah.
Just start the process over.
Yeah, that would be my only thing is, you know, if we're participating that heavily in the line, we need to make sure that we have some say in what we're able to utilize the line for and, and I think have a little bit stronger voice in the, in the future when it comes to that. But we can work on those things at a different time. Is there any other questions from the council?
So recommendation, Mr. Baker, is that we use some of our reserve, but we will need to open the budget.
Yes, in the next council meeting, we would open and amend the budget. Also about our enterprise fund that we can cover this. This recommendation is coming from Kirby, myself, and Ryan. So we've discussed this internally as staff, so we can make a joint recommendation. And I was just talking with Clyde as well, the Conservancy.
One other question that I do have, and I know C I B does allow for micro emergency funding. Is that even, I mean, if we were to try to do that, when would be that funding cycle?
Part of what, part of what came to us, okay, if we need to go and look at some of the funding, that's all, we can do that. I think one thing that we looked at, Moon Lake Water Users most likely wants to just pay it and get going. But if they want to pay and get it going, that puts y'all, I guess, the Roosevelt City, I mean, be the one that needs to have the loan, if that's what we'd like to do.
Gotcha.
Or to kind of cut up. The one part about the loan is it will prolong us. If we look, we need to go get a loan in this part of the process. I really can't go to any type of a, I really can't go to Bowens and Collins and do any kind of bid or any kind of work until I know I have the money.
Unless we were to approve plans or something like that, we could approve that as well. But either way, I was just wondering about the emergency funding, just because this is a project where we could probably get a lot of grant because of the nature and the circumstance of the project.
I have worked with C I B on emergency funding. It is a process, however, timing. Timing is a huge concern right now with the shape of the pipeline.
When are we trying, because there's no water in it right now, or there is water?
There's water in the upper half, lower half, there's not a.
Just up to the vault then?
Yes, just to the vault.
So with no water in it, it shouldn't deteriorate, you know, anymore, at least until we put water back in again. Because it's the electrolysis or the water that's actually causes the damage. But, well, I don't know, I'm indifferent. I just want to make sure that we have all those thoughts out there.
Mr. Baker, do you need a motion or just direction?
At this point, motion would be better, just so we can give Clyde direction to go ahead with this. And so a motion, if we have a motion, if council chooses, if we argue ultimately, then the next round committee, we need to start moving forward.
Okay, any other questions before?
I was curious about the life cycle, once these are put in, how long do you expect it to last?
The impressed systems that we, that anybody has came to us, including the one that became originally with this one, and we asked them if they would do it, we're hoping to get twenty to twenty-five years of the impressed system.
How much of the, how much has already been damaged in the pipeline? Will it last twenty more years?
Don't know. We don't know. And, and the reason why we're probably, and so critical in wanting to make sure that we don't lose any more time is most of the part that, in this lower half or in the bottom portion, I guess you'd say, is under streets and stuff like that. I mean, it's, well, it's sensitive to repair. And that was kind of one of the main reasons also, we were so wanting to get it done as quick as we could. Just so that hopefully you don't see any more pinholes on a portion of it, causes major problems inside, like in the streets or sidewalks or anything.
And when was this pipeline installed again, just to get an idea?
Two thousand and six, two thousand and seven.
Okay, so eighteen sixteen, anyway, yeah, seventeen years ago. Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion or no?
I was just gonna ask, if you, if Kirby or Ryan had anything you want to add, just a sec.
The only thing I wanted to add was, if you look at that chart up there, you can see where it says airport. We're below the black line, so the most critical part of that line that's been damaged the most is on our end. And like Clyde said, there's only one valve too, between us and the reservoir. So if we have something go wrong, it could be interesting. But anyway, just interesting data there. That red line is the last study that the Conservancy District did in two thousand and twenty-three.
Yeah.
Yep.
And it represents the cathodic protection or it represents the damage under the pipe?
The damage. Like you can tell over the, the top line was two thousand and nineteen. And just over the years, it's just kind of integrity is getting lower.
Okay.
Well, Mayor, personally, I think we need to move forward with this and, and I would just say, I know the, if we could go to C I B, it's probably hard to go after the fact, but I still think we could maybe see what we can do that way. But I would, I would move that we go forward with this so they can get started because I think we need to get this done before we have more problems. So I would, that would be my motion to go ahead and get started.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Councilman Island. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Chief Watkins, first responder, responder mental health memorandum of agreement.
Let me ask a couple to come up here and also respond. I'm just, I don't know, because I, you want to talk to? You did like, you liked it, yeah. Lieutenant Sunshine? Chaplain Kyroly was unable to vacate her. This is a topic that's been very passionate with me. And one of the old, I've had some feedback here. About a year and a half ago, we put, we opened a position as chaplain, secretary, and that was D. Kyroly that filled that position. That was intended to start a volunteer for the speed, a mental health with our officers. We have, with new legislation last year, mental health bill funding and grant that has come through. We have, we drafted, let's say, we, Lieutenant Tucker and I put a team. We have drafted Sunshine as a part of the team and also, of course, Brock has been, always been a spearhead as well. Come together and apply for a grant. And I just have to say that the spirit of this endeavor was incredible. The working relationship and how fast it come together and I'll say that Sunshine wrote the grant and she did it really fast. We were awarded twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. We go to our mental health program. That entails a, a, and let me back up here for a second. So the mental health program also includes our fire, so public safety, we include it as well. So that, we have joint forces with Northeastern Council. We made mandatory for our officers to, I, and I have talked with the fire department, I have to put it back on the chief yet, what his plans are exactly on this specific item. But in the police department, we have a mandatory meeting with the council once a year. On top of that, we're putting together our peer support program. And we have a company that we can do that with. Putting together also a critical, critical incentive stress debriefing program as well as, as well as adding a few more hours to the chaplain. I didn't include that, so let me back up. Last budget, I was able to get eight, eight hours paid for the chaplain to come in and start spearheading this as our public safety, mental health coordinator, so to speak, I guess. Unofficially, I guess, kind of, all right. I guess, we'll make it official. How's that? I do have that. And with this grant for the year, we even, we added an extra eight hours, it'll be sixteen hours, so you can spearhead some of this program. Sunshine is now, like I said, did the, did the grant. She's gonna keep track that the money's coming in and the recording process. Lieutenant Tucker's nice and mental and, and supporting me is one of these crazy, wild ideas that, about, uh, go with a mental health, uh, the, app. We have, we have part of company as well, both are hired, but actually that's for employees, all staff in there. So, and really quickly, I have, actually, M O A. So, and really quickly, I have an actually M O A with the state, and there's a couple stipulations, and Mr. Charles would just address those, but first, I want, but they just came in.
I wouldn't call it stipulation, but there, it's a grant, and so as long as the funds are used in accordance with the agreement, there's nothing that the city is on the hook for financially. If the funds were spent in a way not consistent with the agreement, then the city would be required to reimburse the state. So it could go up to twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty dollars we'd have to reimburse. Because there's the possibility of spending that much money on it, it's on the end of the council, they should approve, not this department.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. So with that, we'd like to kickstart this mental health program in the full year for both our fire department and police department. I guess approval of the M O A would be to start, and we'll bring back the
Would be the bit from F R first, which is about seventeen thousand dollars?
F R first, we have set out seventeen thousand, we'll bring that to the next council meeting. But there probably should also be an M O U with them, and sure, we'll see if we can get through Mr. Charles with a quick.
I would imagine there would be a contract, right? Just that contract would be, so is it the ask then to utilize this money for mental health? And then to engage in contracts with these organizations, is that what we're looking at?
We need approval of the M O, M O A initially.
Okay, and this agreement is between Roosevelt City and State of Utah. Okay, just want to make sure that that's clear. And then we'll be having contracts between Roosevelt City and whoever the contractor is for that service. Is this a one-time thing, or is this something that we can apply for year after year?
So, you guys can hear me. So technically, this funding package is a one-year, one-time to either initiate or expand a mental health program that already exists. The legislature required more mental health programs, that's what they previously did, but they're trying to allow funding to expand those programs. Being said, it does sound like nobody wants to go on there.
There, there is some serious thought that there would be more funding or something. Of course, things change day after day.
I'll also say, the way that we wrote the program and the application will specifically allow for, the intention is going, kind of going really big for the first year, taking advantage of as many services as we felt we could get funding for. And we expressly talked about, again, in the grant application and in the program design, carrying things back, constantly assessing things, going, okay, are these elements of the program needed? Are they not? That way, if in the future funding is not available, I don't think we'll be coming back and asking for like, funded, because we're, we're knowing that we're probably not going to want to spend that much.
Basically, if that shows the danger of not even want to start big, and see what works, and see what can establish, and then that over here.
Thank you. Any questions for the council?
Just compliments you all for going after some grant money, especially for something like this. I think it's pretty cool, so thank you for all of your efforts.
Well done.
I think we approved the M O A.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. And second by Councilman Baird, on paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next, Brock, you sit down. You're, you're on deck?
I didn't know if there was gonna be more chatter.
So Utah Cyber Center, Cyber Security Services Memorandum, I've got a page to get out early tonight, so we're cruising right along.
We're cruising right along, okay. So because of the growth that we've experienced and the technology that we're trying to embrace to do things, we're, we, as you, as you know, we're kind of in a position to bring some I T management back in-house. A lot of requests that we were getting for Spectra was, can you reset my password? I need to be connected to the printer where I need. We've moved enough things away from hard drives and things that can fail, that we're putting things up in the cloud. So we're moving that I T management in-house, and the state has some programs we can participate in to save us some money on cybersecurity, because there's been ransomware attacks and other issues in the state as a whole. That about a year ago, they, they created this division of technology services, or the cyber, the Utah Cyber Center. The goal of the cyber center is to help school districts and local municipalities, especially like Roosevelt, they're a little smaller, we don't have huge budgets, to get the same level of security as if we were, you know, Salt Lake County or something, right? And we're to spend some more money on it. So what, what we have here is, in the past, Spectra has been giving us endpoint security for ransomware malware, issuing things, you know, emails that are clickbait, all that kind of stuff. And as we're moving away from that managed I T service with them, the state has a program in place that allows us to, they have a security contract with a company called Sentinel One, to allow us, these municipalities to sign up, that no comes to us, to get this endpoint security. And it's, it's pretty expensive, I don't know if you have it at your local board, Mayor, but it's, it can be really expensive to pay for this type of antivirus malware stuff. So what this memorandum of understanding is, is to enter agreement with the cyber set, Utah Cyber Center, to allow one that we get access to this. So if you look up here on section one, the purpose of this, improve the sharing of information, criticals to cybersecurity operations, provide access to cybersecurity resources and education, develop a whole of state approach to cybersecurity, mitigate risks, et cetera. On page three, down at the bottom, it says M V R project policy. What, what they're saying in this is that the project will provide L G, the local government entity, with access to Sentinel One endpoint protection platform with this list of capabilities. So they do singularity complete or endpoint detection response, which means that if, if they see something or their alerts go off that we're getting a malware, ransomware attack, they immediately respond and start to shut things down and try and stop that attack from happening. And then they keep any data for attempted attacks or hacks for many days. They manage detection and response, they do vulnerability management. We get access here locally twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, if we have questions. They assign us a specific account manager, so that if there is, and prevent some kind of ransomware malware attack, we have direct contact with them to figure out how to mitigate that. And then there is some access to digital forensics at a minimal level, and if we need to do more, then we can figure out how to check that out. So that's part one, is that we want to, we want to allow or team up with the state to give us access to the Sentinel One program. There's a lot of jargon here, I can see glazing over your eyes, so the, that's, that's the gist of it, is we want to be able to participate in this program for that reason. The second part of this, on page six, is project number two, they do vulnerability management protection. Or, I'm sorry, it's called a vulnerability management project, where they just use this agent to help learn what the potential attacks are, and figure out where it's weakened, and Sentinel One can build up their program to protect other people based on what they're seeing from our data. Project number three and four, probably the most, the second most helpful part of this, is that they'll provide some training. They'll train me and they'll train city staff. And what they do with that is they send out random tests to see if they can get people to click on links that we shouldn't, or if they can recognize it. They offer training and videos and things that we can utilize with our staff to teach them how to be more aware.
Can I just say, if y'all get a email from me saying to go buy a bunch of gift cards, don't even ask, just go do it and send it to P O Box, I'm just kidding. Yeah, if you ever get an email like that from me, just know, you don't even have to text me, it's false, it's wrong, it's, it's
I get like two a week from people asking me to change their direct deposit, and I get all kinds of stuff, so. But the, I guess really the best part about this is that it's free. What the state is, that was contracted with Sentinel One for forty years, so we'll have access to it starting, starting right now, but officially January, they have this onboarding process, they kind of gave us a couple of weeks for free, where they get a program, and then January first of twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven, through the end of twenty twenty-seven. And that's similar to this grant that we're talking about. They're constantly seeking more funding for these projects, to see if we can continue that after that first four-year cycle. They're just committing to us that for at least the next four years, we can participate in this at no cost with the state. So they're not gonna be our managed I T, they're not, we can't call them to fix our printer. This is just an agreement saying that they're gonna use some of that data that's tracked in there to be able to make it a better system, and they're gonna provide us with some training opportunities and conditions we can reach out to them, as far as the cybersecurity goes. Questions? I know you all understood everything that I just said.
Do they put like the app on your computer?
Yes, so we deploy that on all the devices that, that the city owns.
Do they also do like tablets, phones, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, you know, phones are tricky, right? Because we have so many employees that have phones that are, that are not
Right, I just think phones that are, there's any
We can put, the, the first step is that it'll be on a firewall, and so, you know, somebody's in here with their regular cell phone. We live in who can access our wifi, we have a separate guest network that's not tied to our regular network with the domain. So when most people are here, we try to give them the guest network password, we didn't have any. So they're gonna be protecting firewall, and then, you know, down to the, the systems that we have, and sure, the computers that we use in here, and then we can have tablets and that as well.
Do they block like emails and things, or do they tag you?
No, I don't know, maybe not, but they, blocking emails or tagging? We, we have some dual protection there, because we already utilize Apple three sixty-five. They have some three robust filters on that, and then they work with our firewall also to block that, so. They're more about after you click on the link, that they're constantly scanning the link. So if it does make it through the email filter that Outlook has, then when you click on the link, it's gonna block you from going to that site, because something in code is telling it, it's trying to sell a program or an macro or some of the kind of data from your computer, and so that's kind of like stopping.
Is there a way to prove sites of faith, maybe, is to make sure you can get to some sites, I know some, some
Yeah, they, they're not necessarily blocking, we can, yes, short answer is yes.
Okay.
And we have that control right now anyway, just through the firewall that we have, the spec or stuff. Or it's like in blacklist, reliable sites, as, as we know that.
I just know sometimes police get frustrated, they need to go someplace, and they can't get there because it's blocked, and they have to contact someone, so.
Anything else, questions, concerns?
I'd like three. Yeah, I like thinking of every program, it's, it's hard not to do it, and most municipalities and counties are participating in this across the state.
Especially the smaller, yeah. It's, our size and smaller are taking advantage, and that's really why they, again, why they set up. I mean, if Salt Lake County wants to participate, obviously they could. They're, they're not discriminating, they say you're too big or you're too small, but it really helps us a lot that it is possible, I think, that's, that's the biggest advantage there, so.
Tell me how it's locked in, I think four years.
Definitely, yeah. I mean, the state has been, one thing that I've talked, when they do these programs, is that their goal is not to, they, they want to train us and educate us, and they do as much as they can to help them. You know, down the road is more and more educated, even if we did have to start picking up the deal, and we knew that it works. What, what we're gaining by this to have it in-house, have them, they're, they're experts, and we, we just can't afford to hire an expert in cybersecurity, it's a huge market right now. You know, cybersecurity insurance policies are super expensive. And we don't have one of those, but this helps mitigate that, so.
I'll say that on the record, we do have a cyber security union, obviously.
Speaking of that, how, I know we've kind of changed our position with Spectra, how's that working out so far?
Good so far. Tomorrow's our last day with them, is our managed I T service. We instituted a couple of relatively inexpensive software items to be able to, we don't want to just give everybody access to have an admin password, the download, whatever they want, whatever they want. And I know that frustrates people, Lieutenant Tucker knows, they, you know, people are working on Saturdays, and so we've, we've implemented a couple of software pieces that allow, instead of that notification to download something going to Spectra and then not seeing it on the weekend, Lieutenant Tucker and I are gonna manage that going forward. We'll have a little bit more control, because we know what programs and software we're using with each of our, and so where maybe Spectra is, is familiar with that, so we're taking all that on ourselves, and so far, well, so far so good. Things probably break on Friday, so.
Well, I would, I guess you need a motion.
I would give this, so that we can, we can contract with the state to get access to Sentinel One.
If you're ready, though.
Yeah, I'd make a motion, we approve the M O U.
Grab a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah.
Uh, Councilman White with a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You did a good job convincing Brock.
He used all the big words they only use, so they were just like
I think the big word that meant the most is the four-letter word, free. So remind me, I'll get the sign, all right?
Okay. And have your initial degree tab as a signature.
Thank you for coordinating that, coordinating that, I'm colorblind, so I can't tell the difference, but.
Just kidding.
All right. Running zoning, uh, some, some discussion that we've talked about before, but some will probably want to move on. This is the bell of the US states, I guess we'll start with that, and then we have the other two, but yeah, go ahead, Drew, sorry.
So that one, we actually said we didn't have a motion last time and accepted this one. Talking with Grant, we need an agreement, contract with partial numbers involved with this meeting forward.
Okay, oh, did we get it approved in our last meeting, man?
So moving on to our animal overlay, and it's no discussion. We reported back last meeting on the planning and zoning recommendation to deny the overlay, and was given the direction to go, get a little more information on the reasons why. Grant was present at that meeting as well. Various reasons, the short answer is they like the zoning the way it is, to protect the homeowners in these areas that have not had animals previously, it could cause an issue that way. Others was flies and smell, and of that nature. So just bringing that recommendation back to you, from planning and zoning, they still stand on their recommendation.
So their, their recommendation is to rezone, right, instead of doing the overlay?
So for Greg Buckstens, yes, their recommendation was to rezone the R one ten to an R R one, for the total of four point two eight acres and a lot of land adjustments.
Uh, I think it was four, I think it was like two point five, six.
Overdue, three bucks, huh?
Yeah.
So there's one point one four, one point five seven, one point five seven.
Plus, I guess they're more reviewed by the owner.
It's not, it's one point zero, you can go.
Okay, the reason I brought them both up is because that's the reason why we started talking about the animal overlay in the first place. I'm indifferent, I do appreciate the planning and zoning, and doing their, you know, due diligence and thinking about that, considering it, researching it, and, and coming back with a recommendation. Any thoughts from the council on the animal overlay, that strong feelings one way or the other on that? Okay, if not, then looking at the rezone then, and it was the planning and zoning suggestion that it be rezoned. And if anything were to happen there, to be rezoned and not the animal overlay, so that's the item of discussion. So to be able to make that happen, if the council agrees to go that direction, then we have to go through the process of running through planning and zoning and the council one last time, just for the actual rezone, just for your heads up. We'll have to have a public hearings on both of those, which isn't a major issue.
We, we did already a planning and zoning, and it passed through the body.
Oh, okay, then it has to be, then this, tonight would be a motion to hold a public hearing for a rezone.
We did have that pulled up.
We had a reason, we had a rezone for
We usually do the public hearing with the item when it comes to the board council as well.
Nah, then show up, no comments.
I might go back and look at the minutes, but I think that we actually did, because the way that this happened is that it went through with the request for the rezone first, came here, and I think it was on the same day that it was having a public hearing, we began with me to verify that in the minutes. The, the council thought that it looks like spot zoning, and so they sent it back to planning and zoning with the suggestion of the over. And so they sent it back to planning and zoning, uh, with the suggestion of the overlay.
Yeah.
And so it went back planning zoning. They didn't like it and that was sent back up here. The council asked us to go back and try to clarify the reasons why. Because it was just basically denial, not a lot of explanation of why. Drew and I went back and talked to them. They gave, uh, some insight on the reasoning behind it, said that that really is what they wanted the recommendation to be, the council. And so then during that whole time, the rezone request was still just kind of hanging out there. And Mr. Buckson, uh, it said that he wanted a decision to be made on that one way or another. For the council's vote on it. And so I think we have gone through the public hearing processes. And the one thing that's left is to vote either yes or no on, um, the zone change.
Okay. So you, okay, that was just a question that I had when we talked about it. Did, did we actually have and hold the public hearing about the rezone?
I thought that we did, but again, I would totally want to look at the minutes. Or even probably just on the agenda, if we can find it for that day, that would show.
Yeah, I know that she'll say.
There was flyers sent out from both planning and city council. We had Barrow and Groger and Van Hensel who were here in support of me on the, uh, on the planning. But then no one showed up at all for.
Yep. So February twenty first, I found our agenda and we did have a public hearing for requests and rezone requests on there.
Okay.
So I think that the process has been completed.
Okay.
And in saying that, um, we need to vote, you, you guys have the option of not voting. Um, but Mr. Buckson just come back forward saying that he was hoping that you would vote on it. And I think we're ready for that.
Yeah. Any questions on that? So this is a four point five eight acres, you say, or two acres?
Two acres, three parcels.
And so as part of the, the consideration for the rezone, um, consolidating those parcels, they need to want one other parcel.
Be the next item, actually, I think we need to do as well.
Right. So I would, I would recommend if there is a motion to approve the, the zone change, that the council considers adding the consolidation of those three lots into one lot as conditions for the zone change. Any thoughts, questions?
Can we see the zone map again?
And the location?
Because I mean, we turned it down once for spa zoning. So I just don't necessarily remember the zones and how it looked and why we initially turned it down.
Normally, and Grant will tell you this, but historically and normally, we tried to stay away from spa zones. And, and that was the discussion, trying to accomplish, uh, what Mr. Buckson wanted to do with his land without spa zoning. The thing that that is not something that, that, we could have approved the animal overlay anyway, even though the planning and zoning recommended not to. I think it's important that we show support for planning zoning. They're very close to our institutions and, and I think going with their recommendation is, is something that should carry some weight. Uh, a little.
A little further west.
Yeah, right where your mouse is at, right there.
Is that around the edge of county?
Pretty close. So right there, those four. Is it those three or four? Just those three?
The three grass.
So it goes behind Freckles Farm, right? Okay. And it's had animals.
Since nineteen sixty.
Since I can remember. I was born in seventy nine, so since, since seventy nine, I know there's been animals.
This is one of the properties that has the privilege of our grandfather. Animal rights.
I think, you know, where it's had animals on it and, and I don't know when this is only mapped or, you know, when we, uh, zoned this. On designation, but just considering there's so much data down there, I think that it's maybe something we ought to look at a little bit or maybe we're helping developers with it. Homes there. If this is the direction that he wants to go, then we shouldn't have any problem. Creating a planning and zoning recommended, and I think, I think it's.
One, one question that I have, I'm, I'm totally in favor of helping the situation out. Were there any other people like Mr. Buckson that were trying to keep that, um, animal right use? And not, not lose it if they stole the property or something?
Mr. Buckson's.
I just, I just want to be conscious that if there's other people that fit this, then we would have to be willing to do the same thing for them.
Yeah, but they'd also have to meet the specifications later.
Well, in our one, it's just a one acre lot technically. So as long as you have at least a one acre piece, you could be considered. This is a much larger piece, so it makes it a little easier. But yeah, just for the future consideration that, and to be clear, that it would just need to be at least one acre lot to be, uh, considered for a rezone to our. But that's a good thought, Dustin. Any other thoughts? Seeing none, do we have anyone willing to make a motion?
I'll make it. Well, I like to make emotions. I would move that we approved the rezone request from R one ten to RR one and the lot giant line adjustment as well for, uh, Mr. Buckson.
Contingent upon.
Yeah, are you approving both or are you giving one contingent upon the other?
Yeah, I guess that's.
I, I think, let's go with the first one, but.
Okay. He just said to vote both, but I, I'm willing to amend it to just.
Yeah. We just need both of them aboard. Yeah.
We're not, is the, is the lot line adjustment scheduled on this meeting?
Yes. Yeah, so, so we could, we could approve that contingent on the line adjustment and then approve the lot line adjustment.
Okay. I'll change my motion to that.
Okay. So we have the, the motion to approve the zone change from an R one ten to an RR one, contingent on the lot line adjustment taking place, um, for a total acreage of four point two eight acres. Right on?
Hmm.
Okay. Do we have a second? Signing by Councilman Baird, all in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, motion passed, we've handled this way. Now do we have a motion for the actual, I think it's already been said, but, uh, consolidating three lots into one to make a total lot size of four point two eight? Anything else you'd like to add, Drew?
No, they're all, they're all consistent together. It's like you saw on the map, so it's, the recommendation, the planning is only being approved last week.
Okay, and that's item four underneath. Nine E four. Okay. So do we have a, a motion to that effect?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilman White. That came by Councilman Allen, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Hey, someone then.
Thank you.
We tried, we tried to, we got it. Yeah, thanks for being patient, Jerry.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. Government moves slow, but we get, eventually get something done.
You know, it's something I want, but it's also something that, uh, oh, it's been my family since nineteen sixty six, so there's a lot of emotional.
Oh, yeah, no question.
Trust me, I do not want this place smelling bad, like.
No. That would, that would actually dishonor your dad a little bit, I think. I loved your dad, he was great. And when I first moved in, he helped us out a lot, so.
He haunted me in my.
I believe that.
That's what I keep it up to, you know? See, that's my mom, you're the show.
Well, we have the second most exciting thing we've been waiting for tonight. Municipal code update titles one through four and thirteen.
Good job. Done it a lot for nothing.
Hey, I'll take it.
Thanks. Welcome, Mike. Mike Hanson is here with the RCC group. He's been helping take this can along the freeway for several months. We're finally to the stage to, here you are, form the kickoff, um, presentation. And that's what Mike is here to do on titles one, two, three, four, and.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Thirteen. Is Kendall zooming in on this?
She told me I'm grown up and I'll do try it, so. She also tells us to phone a friend when I get that look.
We have included in your package there a, what do we call those? Callops. Callops and callops.
Yeah.
Basically, those, but at the same time, you have these those titles that we are, they are recommended to be updated.
Thank you. Yeah, Mike Hanson, Rural Community Consultants. Uh, very excited to be here tonight. Most people don't say that. I'm excited because this is a project we started quite a while ago. Uh, and, uh, you know, ways to start docking it, implementing it into your code. Um, it has gone through planning commissions, other staff. Actually, I haven't thought quite a bit. Wanted to preface to tell you though, um, this is Cooper. Almost every community across the state that we work with, obviously not pay the public to care about their local code. Unless we say, you know, and I have a short list that somehow always gives them minutes and starts them over. So I won't tell you the true numbers. One room, uh, runs a tech. And, and you know, just start talking like that. The others don't say anything about that, anyway. So, uh, stage intro. Uh, we have had this, um, the city put together a book page. It's part of a page, page inside your site. Specific is kind of, we're, we're keep that until you're done with your last type. It's been good. Um, we were hoping to get more public, uh, read back through it. And basically we got some council members, uh, that have typed in and I commented on the titles fifteen, which will not talk about it tonight, but we know somebody's looking at it. But yeah, I, I can answer any questions, uh, or really smart first, one you're going to hear from when we get into your land use issues. Uh, Kendall Welsh did literally say, I should just text her and she can read them and, uh, save me if I totally confuse everybody. But if, if you tell me how you want to, to go through these, I can give you kind of the high level summary of the summary of each of the titles or even one at a time or even just start typing them.
Thank you for doing this, by the way. You have an excellent job, I think, yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate it. Um, so last October, over the October, I went through and made a few comments.
Yes.
Those did get looked at. I think they're not in this copy here.
They don't print. They are in there, they just don't print well. It's the problem. Google Docs is great because the whole community can come and type and see what you're saying. But they aren't great because you have to download the comments in a very weird way. It's never pressed.
I, I printed a word, dropped the comment.
Yeah, yeah.
I did have some comments in these two. Are we supposed to comment in these?
Those would be great. Yeah, we didn't see those.
And mine, I don't know where they went. I, I looked on the documents, I made the comments in, I'm not seeing them, so I don't know what.
Should be typed and it saves as you build that here, but maybe we need a different process for the next titles.
Personally, like go through just R one, any questions? And then do, get those down and then R two, just kind of go through that way? That's okay?
Maybe I'll.
No, I don't think we need to read all the code. I mean, unless you want to. I just, I have like two questions, it's all on R one. And if anyone else has questions.
I'd like to see the code like this, if we got reference A one here, this is kind of the itemized, like this is what we did. I think it's good to look at to see how.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and we actually have a few, uh, questions for you all too. So this is basically just the summary. You do have a link to the actual.
Right.
Code and kit.
Right.
We didn't print the whole thing off?
I printed the first four.
I can speak to that.
I downloaded as a Word document, so I got the comments. Because they wouldn't print the comments from the website, like you said.
Yeah, Kendall does know about the comment. We, some groupages, we may not have all those comments, so she was looking into that as well.
And the packets you have on your desk, I printed to assist you in your review. Um, that's why the title, the header of each title has a QR code that links directly to the living documents with those track changes. Um, as Drew mentioned, it would be really, really long to print all of the Google Docs with those track changes, which is why they're not included in those packets. But that again is why you have the link there. And, um.
And then turn it back. And I, I understand that. Well, it, it does, yeah, it is a good.
We, I guess, what's the, um, yeah, my biggest so for tonight, which is kind of, um, because obviously we're not changing anything officially. This is just a comment, we're just making comment and is it to help you make sure that you're getting what we?
Yeah, we'll follow your lead. Uh, this is, I think, the first time that we've actually brought to, to this group as approval. But you can only move it to your next meeting or.
Well, and we can, we can discuss it and look at some questions like Councilman Lusenbach has and things like that to task and dialogue.
Yeah.
Obviously, this is something we'll have to approve after a public hearing, unless it's a land use ordinance and then we have to go through planning and zoning and then public hearing. So tonight, let's just go through some of the questions, concerns or things like that as we go through and make sure that, you know, whatever suggestions we made are being incorporated in. And to me, I think that's the best drop to take.
Okay.
I do just have a question though. So in here, like when we're, when we're looking at that man's document, it's Google Docs and I'm in there. It's a can, where do I write my comments? Just right in this yellow.
You could, we've seen them in the actual Google document, um, but then we also.
My questions and concerns, would you prefer, I can just in the Google document?
Yeah, we go through the whole. I think the public that is going to be interested will only look at what you're holding there. To be honest, they, they get lost in red lines, but we love the red lines, so. Maybe that's a note from my team is we will make sure that the summary is, is updated for each one of your packets. So you can make them be in place. Okay, they have to be.
Because I think I'm going to do that, the part of like looking over and just putting my input. I want to spend a little bit of time on there, which I have done for these whole sections.
Yeah, you're good.
My comments.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
Um, if there's like a history that I can look back and see.
Have you made it on the Google app?
I printed it, so I probably have your comments.
We have our bear comments.
Well, it didn't say, my con, the thing's comment, it doesn't say his name. That's the only problem, so.
That's because it's probably out of work. But your word didn't take that. Anyway, okay.
But that needs to be a lot more transparent where we can show what this is coming from where.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was just more like a question I had for, when I do.
Yeah.
Well, that'll be on our team too. Make sure that we have to hold this, so. Okay, good. I think I'll hope in, in future packets, what we'll do is instead of, it mean like general miscellaneous items, policy discussion summary, versus A one, A two, and A three. I think what we're going to do is actually reference the, the text somewhere. Uh, just go through the intermind, we'll come some more.
Okay, so one of the questions that I think Councilman Baird had the same questions, R one dot zero four dot one hundred.
Right, uh-huh.
It says, any and all fees levied by the city for purposes including, but not limited to, licenses, building permits, or fees collected for any other entity shall be established at that time that said license fee or permit is paid in full. The question was, what does that mean in general terms? I know it's a lot of verbiage. I think what you're saying is that, that people get the license fee, permit, whatever, when they pay it in full. So if they pay partial, they don't get it until they pay it in full, is that?
Yes, and it's according to the P schedule that was in place, they're vested in. We can reiterate.
I don't know, I just, it, it seemed a little obscure in my mind. Actually, one before, the enacting clause sounds really pompous, but it says the enacting, R one point oh four, point oh nine oh, enacting clause, enacting clause of all city orange chapter gosh, shall be in the following form, be it ordained by the city council of Roosevelt, Utah, and said language shall perceive the text to be adopted as organs. Is that something we have to do?
You don't have to, but we noticed most cities do. And we didn't know if that's a legal tradition, uh, that needs to be retired or.
Be it ordained by the city council of Roosevelt, Utah. I don't, I guess it's okay. But none of our others, I guess, the, the, when I read that, I thought, but none of our others say that. And so from going forward now, we have to say that. So people are going to read that sometimes and most of the time not. So to me, I, again.
Yeah.
I just felt like it was silly in my book, but whatever.
And just for the record, you'll see all of us on our phones. We're looking at the code. This for public.
But. No, I, I created mine, so I don't have to look at the phone. No, I, I created mine so I don't have to look at the phone.
And I didn't think about people to know who are watching that that's what we're doing. Cause we're bringing up the, and you can do it at home as well.
Yep. Well, the enacting clause doesn't have to have that exact verbiage, but we do think you probably need to end the enacting clause in your code. So yeah, we can work on that language too.
I, I, I guess my confusion, like I said, is that none of our other code says that and all of a sudden going forward, we're gonna say that. So it makes more sense to either do it consistently or not do it at all. As my, I mean, an extra verbiage doesn't help the situation when people can't understand the code. Anyway, and the first thing they read, be it, you know, be it said, the great and powerful laws says this verse. And all shall bow and, you know, in reference and deference to this.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that.
Well, we should just put Jay our bird instead of Roosevelt.
Thank you.
Senator Bird maybe, right?
I'm just doing, what, what section is that in?
It's R one dot oh four dot oh nine oh.
And one note for those that are trying to navigate through, if it's new content, uh, then you can scroll down and find it, but you will not likely find it at the very beginning.
I've not seen it in.
Yeah, there's not a page versions on that first page.
It goes to R one zero eight. Let's see, no, zero four, zero.
R one zero four, zero nine, zero.
Yeah, I'm just going to zero four, zero eight, zero. Repel, I'll not review any ordered ordinance.
That's right.
That's what I see, but I don't see.
You have to go to. Go, go back on Brian or Sunshine. I think it's in the PDC one is what I clicked on. And I think that's where I found it. No, that was an.
Yeah, sure somewhere to see.
Go back.
So this is the, this is the track changes that go with PDC one.
So if you scroll down on the general provisions. You get to after construction.
Okay, there we go.
There you go.
Oh, there it is.
A little bit higher.
There it is, right there.
Yeah, an acting law.
Thank you.
Um, and then this is a great example. What we're looking at on the, the screen is, uh, Councilman Baird's comment is there, but we can print it out on paper if you want to see.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
You'll see red line, but he won't say.
Yeah. All right. And, and I said, I don't know how the council like, I personally, I, again, my, I said it, my concern is none of our other code says that. And then going forward, we're gonna now say that. It just feels.
I think that's a simple bit.
We see it.
Yeah.
And then the last thing, and I, maybe I'm misreading this, it's R one oh eight, uh, three, zero. Um. Yeah, on number three, it says the, the. There's a hearing, the city council shall, I guess, examine witnesses and then the city council shall uh. Uh, inform the person, but above in the previous code. I apologize. I'm not sure which, I think it's R one oh eight, one oh. Number two says the city council may not serve as an appeal authority for a decision. Oh, it made its body.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those aren't countered.
Now.
Cause we're talking different things.
Yeah, and that's one that I want to bring to this group. I'm glad you found. That is a discussion point that our team needs to know how you want to run. Um, we know the larger cities, um, the attorneys are advising them that, you know. City council members are city, they're elected, they have to be over here and planning commission uh, is a different body and, you know, they should read each other's minutes and that's how they talk.
Okay.
And, and that's, it's hard, but the smaller the town or the faster they go sometimes, it's very common that a city council member will become a member of the planning commission. And it's just becoming a bigger issue. So we're just advising, we, we don't do that.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to do that. And then the, the appeals committee though, um, you bring up a good point because we have had. Ohio has defined in our codes right now, but um, for example, when it's not a planning and zoning issue, the decisions comes before the council. There needs to be an appeals committee that will see that if, if that person wants an appeal and it has to be independent from the council. At one time it was our city manager, mayor. Yeah, and so it might be spelled out, but we need to address that and make sure that that's one, how we feel the best appeals process is for. Because I think that was changed a little bit in, in, I can't remember the title. But I think we need to readdress that as well. And so if you, Drew, you'll remind me, maybe not tonight, but where that's, let's take a look at it. Um, because I know that was modified and I didn't quite think it was the best.
It's a little weird.
Yeah.
I read over that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I agree uh, that we shouldn't serve as the appeal authority and I also agree about the not being on those two things that were separate. So, and that was the only questions or comments I had from R one. Most of it felt pretty straightforward, just cleaning up some language. And, and that was the only comment I saw that you'd made, Dave, Councilman Baird, so. That's all I.
I agree with all the other stuff.
Mm hmm.
You know.
Any questions or things that need to be addressed on title two?
Um.
Tonight?
I, so I had a question on R two dot one oh one dot oh one oh, oh one oh, so R two dot oh one dot ten filing fee.
Yes.
We don't charge a filing fee to run for council, right?
No, yeah, yeah. I don't want, I think we ought to get rid of that.
That's not fair. They charged me.
Really? That's why you lost. You, you're all your money that you're gonna campaign with.
That's what they're using for the Christmas party tomorrow. I just saw that. We don't charge one as far as I know, so I don't know that we need that. It's the elections, R two dot oh one elections is the very first item.
Oh, that's. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I bet you, I put that in the, in this document, my comments there, cause I'm.
Yeah, cause it's not on this one.
Yeah, cause I did comment on that, but I'm pretty sure I put it in the.
The question is, do we want to have a filing fee or no?
We want it. It's so many.
I, I don't think we want one now. We haven't before. If, if future councils want to do that, that's fine, but you know, they charge fifty bucks to run for school board. If you want to run for school board, you, they charge you a fifty dollar fee, but anyway.
How much does do school board?
Make less than city council. Well, technically, no, they pay their insurance, so guess they make more, but I didn't take the insurance, so I make less.
Well, that is a question I've got for this group though. Uh, you can see how many red lines we've got in our, your title.
Sorry.
And I guess I should back up. This is commercial break. One of the things we did throughout your code is the um, R two memo clayure. Uh, just because you guys have some shared services with Ballard, you know, so, so this just helps with your enforcement. That was good input. Yeah. Your team. Anyway, but yeah, back to that question on the elections, that, all of that content is new.
Yeah.
Sorry. Up to.
Well, and the, the contribution disclosures, I know uh, Sunshine does a great job sending those out and their deadlines and stuff. I think all that looked pretty good. I thought I didn't notice.
Yeah, I didn't think there was any issue with that as long as we do get the notification because otherwise I guarantee I'm not gonna.
Right, and, and.
The contribution deadlines, the contribution reports are mandatory whether we have it in our.
Right.
Or not.
Yeah.
This is something that's.
Annual, cause it's, is that's pretty campaign, but they've got a provision in there that says every year, any money we've received. So I'm okay with that as long as I'm notified.
I don't take anybody's money before.
And Sunshine notified me, so I think we're good on that. Um, I did have a question on.
When election happens.
R two.
Annual.
Well, that, that was a provision that.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I only send out notices as part of the election and campaigning process. Um, so that's something that thus far has not been happening since I've been here. Is we haven't been doing those. So um, that is something, yes, we, we can do, but that hasn't been happened.
I think we need to.
And in, in here by rural community consults is something that we would have to do and it also says that you would notify. So as long as that's in there and as long as that happens, I'm.
Technically, we have to whether you remind us or not.
Well, as far as the state ones for election, but as far as the annual ones, is that the case?
Yeah, I'm talking about the annual.
Oh, I see. But this one, so when, when we're, the annual ones, I wouldn't, I mean, that's on the candidate, but for a candidate that's running for office that year, I think that.
I would recommend not having it for annual, just unless there's a reason that's required by the state to do it outside of campaigning. I don't see why it would be necessary to have it in there.
I don't think that is, that would, you know, like certainly. Maybe for campaign while we're not.
It doesn't say that we have to remind him, right? It just says.
Am I correct?
That's why I'm kinda reading, uh, yeah. Sorry, who is this last year's?
I'm just going up my memory for a moment.
Yeah, annual campaign.
Well, let's, let's take a look at that maybe.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know if it's there or not.
I did have a, uh, in the same area, R two, two thirty. R two, two thirty. I, and I've just been remembering wrong. I know we, as a council voted for term limits. I thought it was three terms, but it says, was it two?
It was two. We talked about modifying it to three, but we'll have to have a public hearing to be able to change that.
Okay, I, I couldn't remember what we, I know we've talked about three and I was just trying to remember. So I'm okay with it. I just couldn't remember. That's why it was more of a question to clarify.
We can make that modification when we, when we uh, approve the rest of them as long as it's done correctly. So we can put that language in. May, I make that comment because you're right. It was talked about doing and what it was is that two terms in any one spot, two consecutive terms and then. The three terms total, which you can have more than two consecutive terms as a mayor or a councilman.
All right, that's, that's what I remember. That's just it.
Yeah, when we, this is what we, what we.
I, I, and I vaguely remember, but then I remember we had discussions about the other and I was trying, and I just confused it, I think.
This could be a very different.
And three terms on as one is all, you know, the obvious. Two terms in the other one. Yeah, the two terms in any one spot. I don't know. I think we need to talk about a little bit.
That's pretty common.
It's common for two or three.
The, the way we wrote it, there's two terms.
Okay.
If, if, if they're gonna limit it at all, I should say.
Um, I noticed also on, this is quite a ways down, R two twenty thirty, uh, number nine, false alarms. Is this?
Oh, yeah.
Is this the new language? Cause we just adopted something new with the fire chase.
I was just with the P schedule and so this will be an ordinance change.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be back to the guy is you guys needed more teeth or abilities to.
Right. I just wanted to, I thought it, it looked like it reflected. I just want to make sure it had been updated for that.
Yeah, so the code won't actually be in effect yet.
Right.
The P schedule has changed.
Right.
So.
Um, I think this is a David Baird con, uh, comment, R two thirty six thirty, general qualifications.
Yes. For planning commissioners, right?
Uh, and making appointments to the planning commission. Uh, it says, it's comment is just curious if there are code in other cities. That defines and addresses conflicts of interest for board members or insider information crimes. I'd like to see more internal controllers that, that those who may serve on the board are not able to influence or push decisions that personally benefit themselves.
There's, there are, there is a law already in place that is a conflict of interest law. So if you have a conflict of interest, that has to be stated in the meeting. Doesn't mean you can't vote, but you have to state your conflict.
Right.
And so there.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, there is a, there is a paper that we probably should all be signing every year, least at the beginning of our terms. This states exactly that. We should be signing it, making sure that we declared any conflicts of interest and that, that we will declare those conflicts.
Actually, I had to with the school board. I had to sign a paper.
We will be doing that. It'll be something that we.
I, I would, I would actually recommend.
I remember saying.
And I don't know if it's a yearly thing or if it's a month, if it's a term.
Is it due to annual if you want?
Yes, and that goes along with, we still with this, I'm saying these, um, have an annual training. Just uh, because it'll discuss, it'll discuss those types of things in annual training.
So my comment isn't on this screen, but it is in there somewhere.
Where?
It's on that number two. Can I read it?
Yeah, we agree with you. We, we like that too. Um, um. There is a lot of other codes that have it, but.
Yeah, that's all I have for two. If anyone else has another one.
What are you about, Mark, to make sure?
Did we address all the things in yellow that needed your, our approval? Because I, I don't think we've been looking at all.
You're, you're fine. No, it's fine. We're talking about the same one so far. The only thing, okay, so your elections uh, element, a lot of that content was just new. So we talked about that. Um, the third one, uh, the city council, if I remember correctly, your code had. City manager, city council kind of all blended together or something. It was kind of weird. We pulled those apart. Uh, we didn't actually, you know, people. All ordained people with new powers and stuff, but we just tried to clarify, you know, so you can have uh, that one. And uh, um, you also have a personnel manual. Uh, our understanding is you have a personnel manual. It's good and it's updated. So we deleted a lot of content out of code because we're just referencing your currently adopted personnel. So here, that's what we need to do. Um, building official was a state thing, the false alarm, the planning commissioner.
Where, where was that fact on, Mike? The um, when you referenced the policy, the only reason I ask is because, because the policy has been able to be modified by. You know, staff, which is fine as long as it's in their purview and it's all I would say. So we want to make sure that anything that's.
Oh, well, okay. I'm gonna actually make a note um, on that. Would you prefer the personnel manual comes kind of like a P schedule or something? Is it a council document?
I don't know that we need to go that far. I just want to make sure that whatever those liberties that we're, we're delegating to the staff is. I mean, it's been, I think it's been talked about a little bit and we don't have a problem here necessarily as well, but what I am saying is the bureaucracy, you know, the state getting larger and then.
Yep. We're actually having a town smaller than you calling that stuff. We do, yeah, uh, personnel manuals and uh, bylaws.
Policy manuals.
Yeah, and we, we think, well, no, we, but it's more and more of an interest in smaller towns having, even if they have very small sets, way smaller.
I think our, our staff does really well. I think we do have a good manual. I just want to make sure that things that should stay, that should stay in code, stay in code. And those things are set pretty good.
The only one I'm bringing up uh, is your airport. For some reason was in your taxes. We'll just take it and look at it because. You can tell something with it.
So R three, there were no comments from, other than comments you made or others.
Yeah.
Um, the only question I had had nothing to do with this, but I know it talks about the sales tax and the amount that we can. Kind of charge and I'm just more curious. It's probably, we'll just have to wait and see, but I know the state's talking about. If people vote for this change in the income tax, where it can go, that they'll repeal the sales tax, which then. Sales tax might, and that's a different issue. That doesn't affect us, so. But I'm just curious, cause if the state repeals the sales tax, then, then we would still have to charge it because we need funds to run. But then the sales tax would be dropped to one or two percent or whatever it is. And I, I read it, but I can't remember what it is. But anyway, they're, they're, they're promising the lower, if, if the state uh, people, if the people, so, cause the constitution in Utah says. That income tax, all income tax has to go to education and there's this big pot of money and they'd like to spend some of it on roads and mental health and other things. Yeah, it says one percent, but then I think later on there's another uh, percent as well. Um, but anyway, they're saying if you vote for this change in the constitution, we'll repeal the sales tax, which then lowers it. But then that still leaves municipalities with needing health tax. So it's not all going to be gone unless the state says. But then that still leaves municipalities with needing health tax. So it's not all going to be gone unless the state says, we'll fund that as well. But I don't know that they can afford to do that. Anyway, it's kind of a mess. But that has nothing to do with you, with this. Like I said, I didn't have any heartburn or any questions on this one person.
Well, not that we had a decision here at a state level, but like the sales tax is at least something that you choose. Right. To purchase, you know, to a degree where income tax, I mean, they take it out.
Yeah.
Before you, you know.
But yeah, and that is gonna be an interesting issue to watch because, you know, cities do buy into it in the context of how much commercially put in their city limits versus let's be.
There you go.
Well, what I understand is they, the, they're already together and they told the school districts that we gave you this money this year and you will support this. You won't vote against it because we've already helped you out. So.
Do you have a name?
Well, I better not say too many names, but I've talked to several people and, and that's what's coming down next year. They were trying to get it this year, but they didn't get it in time. They wanted to do it this year because it's an off-year election. So they'd less people, they thought they had a better chance of passing because people read, hey, your sales tax is going down. They'll support it. And I'm a public meeting sharing this, so that's good.
Yes.
Thank you.
The state FBI will be at my doorstep tomorrow.
Yeah. So your title three is actually kind of, is written by the state a lot. Brian, Steve Sanders and stuff. But there was something new we put in there and wanted some feedback on. That's on three point oh six. And it's just simple, like we just don't know what the practice is really in Roosevelt or if you want it to be the practice, but you know, in some towns they'll, um, like Habitat for Humanity or something, will come in and say, let the city help us with something. Your code doesn't make a position yes or no on it. So I wonder, I don't know, we found towns that did do that or gave you the option to do it. Don't know if you wanted it in there.
How, well, it depends on the ground, I guess. We do have committees that we do, particularly the arts parks and rec committee. And so if there was something that had to do with that group, they would have to go to that group to find funding because we automatically give a budget to that. I don't know. Did you say that, what was the, uh, the frustration you made?
Well, they have Habitat for Humanity thing, or I've been to towns where the Eagle Scout project comes up and they ask the mayor. In a public meeting, you know, the mayor's having a, geez, and they, you know, here's a hundred bucks for your project or something. You guys don't talk about it in your code. Don't know if you have experience or need.
Never been asked, really.
Yeah. But if you did, if somebody came up with, with some kind of thing for veterans or some, I don't know. This would at least limit the amount that the city could get. You know, it puts boundaries on it, so you don't. I know. It's kind of weird. And I've noticed this language, the towns that do have this, they all use the exact same language. So that's what you're looking.
What's the amount?
Uh, quarter, sorry.
I'd say one quarter, one percent.
What about your general funds revenue? So. Yeah, it's a lot.
Well, we have discretionary funds and that's where that should come out of in my mind. If the council wants to support something, but I do think a limit would be good just so that we don't. Yeah. And I think it would just come out of the, the council discretionary funds or something.
So for that piece of code, do we want to pull that out or?
I would say yes. I don't think we need it.
Cause it's good open to the door. So you're not looking at the, you have.
I'd rather take it out personally and just use our discretionary. If someone came like that, we could.
But do you think? Not having it in the code.
Just here to where this happens all the time in Burnell, maybe.
Yeah.
All the time.
I was gonna say, by not having it in the code, we leave ourselves and future councils up to making a open-ended decision, which I don't think is good. I think, um, if we had it in the code, it would, it would address that those funds would come from the discretionary fund of the council. And then it, and, and a certain cap on that. So another council could come in and just give fifteen, what is our discretionary fund at this point? Fifteen, twenty?
Don't worry in that area.
Something like that, yeah.
Should say something about being limited to whatever is the budgetary approved budget.
Yeah. And, and I would say a, a, a percentage of the yearly council discretionary budget.
Okay. Instead of the projected general revenue.
Yeah. So maybe it's ten percent of that budget. It is fifteen or twenty percent of that budget. Well, ten percent, that ten thousand would be a thousand dollars. So maybe it's five percent budget, something like that. And then we know exactly what the funds are going to come from and how much the maximum is that we can give out of that to any one organization.
I do like the application process that's included in the second part there. They, they.
And Josh just don't.
Some guidelines. So.
So I got a question, Josh. The, the people that come to Burnell and Naples, CP grants from the city, you guys, is what you're talking about? Is it because they know that people have done that in the past? And I'm just wondering if we put this in there, then all of a sudden it's in our code and people can see that, hey, the city gives grants. We don't put it in the code and then it's outside, out of line. Do you think, it's like, what are the reasons why they come in there? Maybe because it's just wrong at this point?
A lot of it is that, and what the council does, the discretion they have. And you can set up internal policies if you don't actually have my code. One thing that, so when I first got to Naples, it was almost every meeting, people would come in. And it got to be a huge burden on the council because it's hard to turn down Little Timmy's Eagle Scout project. So what they ended up doing was an internal policy where they had to vet it through staff. And if it was a bigger thing, like the rodeo would come every year, they would have to give the staff, get a request for the following year and it would be budgeted for. And they would come in, they were from the rodeo requesting funds for help with our event. Council would say, staff, how much do we have budget for more budget workshop? Oh, we have three hundred dollars. You can do it that way. So you can do it where it takes the pressure off of you, but it also is nice to have that discretionary. If you have a neat project that comes, somebody's doing an all abilities park. You can do something where you want to give a little bit more funds to that. Naples didn't have an ordinance that limited it. It actually was very beneficial because they built an all abilities park, the community did. And they had all the funds and they were lashing ten thousand dollars. The council decided after a request, they were gonna finish off that park just so it could get done in discretionary. If we had an ordinance like this, you wouldn't be allowed to do it. Your, your hands would be tied. So there's good and bad. I see the benefit of having the ordinance. On the flip side, you're talking about the council who's the ones that can modify the ordinance. And you're the ones that make it a discretionary.
Takes a lot longer to modify an ordinance than approve a ten thousand dollar request. And that's, that's my theory is if somebody were to come in, and I'm always, there's. Like, and the process is not open-ended because it's the tendency of government to push the boundaries all the time. And if we set some boundaries, I think it's a good practice, but anyway.
Yeah. I mean, I know that's, we use our discretionary funds for different things and all of it on. I don't, I think sometimes it's necessary to do a little bit more. So I don't know if I like that number myself.
Well, maybe, I mean. The other thing that you gotta remember though is, is like it's, like it's troop two fifty six and troop three fourteen. One comes in and you don't have a number and they get two thousand and this one gets five hundred and then you get, to me, for the smaller donations and I get what you're saying. Maybe there's some bigger projects and, and bigger things that then would come before the council and, you know.
Yeah.
Then we would go through the budgetary process, but.
Yeah. I'm trying to think, think of an example of what we've done in the past. Yeah. Cause scout troops and then that's totally different than like the community media will have to extra money and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a government, well, sanctioned organization.
Well, the way this, the way this reads, it doesn't come right to the council. There's a review board that goes through and you can set your, you know, your criteria up for the view that would. I don't know where to tie those or something for certain.
Well, maybe let's, let's take that one through.
We'll go on that one.
Yeah. And I, I will just say, um, let's get through what we have. I've got a, I have a hard line at seven, maybe ish. But, uh, if, if we can, I mean, I don't want to, I mean, we're almost there, but if there's anything, we're to title three right now.
Title three, and board is a total go-go question.
Yeah.
I don't, I, I thought it or not, it's all.
Yeah.
Title four, uh, the idea we started to see some towns instead of just referencing state code on grandma management back. So referencing, they actually write their own code. I haven't been through this one.
My dad.
That's what you did. Thirty-nine pages of new grandma. It's in state code. I think the one reason, and we put it in here as just suggestions. We did start to see a trend and some of the other towns were repeating on their code.
So did you say you get some grandma requests?
Yeah. I, I have a, a recommendation if you would like it on this. Um, grandma is updated often, very, very often. They have a robust review board, like the, the clerks and recorders groups who are involved with that and the review boards who do that are constantly working. My concern is that if we had our own code addressing grandma, it would fall behind very quickly. Um, and require a lot of updating. And my experience so far with grandma is that although it's, you know, it's a, it's a very large section of code treat, it's well done and it makes sense. So I, my preference as somebody who responds to those requests would be to just keep using the state's regulations because they are so regularly checked and updated by the people who are utilizing that system the most.
Yeah. The only reason we would suggest even, we can, we just put it in here so you can talk about it, but is if you want to do something more discreet than you know.
No.
Okay. That was easy.
It was easy. Yeah.
And I apologize. I didn't print thirteen. It was supposed to go over.
Well.
It was fifty some pages.
Yeah. And it's a lot of technical content. Um, this is your, uh, public services title. And so the, the big change, when you pull it up, there are so many red lines. Basically, we just took the airport title too. All of that content went into here, uh, to this time. So and, and we didn't change how you're trying to run your airport or any of that kind of stuff. Um, we just did that. Uh, with your water service, which is thirteen oh four, um, your existing code, yeah, has like the actual application form content. And, uh, we think, um, we just reference the content so that you can stay up to date on those. Cause those always are wrong in cities and you trip over yourself on those. That said, if you get to the comfortable keeping it. But, but we just think it'd streamline things a little bit. Um, and then we also, you had, uh, I can't remember how much content, but I think it was maybe water, something else. Anyway. You have, you're maintaining as a city, you have built standards, you know, engineering style, standard drawings, whatever you want to call them. You have those. But then the, the code had some of the same built thing, content in the actual ordinance. And we just changed those to a reference that currently adopted engineering standards. Kind of like the. Um, and we added a little acts of fire writers as well. And honestly, if I'm looking at my own notes, that's kind of the thrust of thirteen. You guys didn't break with your, you know, engineering. We didn't, our guys didn't see.
And I looked at thirteen, I didn't see anything.
Yeah.
Great. Well, Mike, thank you for coming out and that, working through some of those things with us and we'll keep plugging away. Um, it sounds like we're pretty close to getting a few of those officially codified and, and approved.
Yeah. You guys just give us the green light on what you want us to do, uh, you know, when you finally adopt. Uh, also tell us what your next step is. Do you want a monthly work session, kind of discussion thing like this, or do you want to?
Yes.
Okay. We'll work with you guys and figure out.
Can you plan the next, whatever, four, three, whatever?
So what I think what we need to do honestly is the ones that we've worked through, one through four and then thirteen. I would say before, yeah, before we start.
Okay.
Another section. And so that way, what I would say is in between maybe our next meeting in January, unless we have one. I would say our first meeting in January, um, let's get any other information to Mike. Clarify any questions on those four sections of code. And then January, be ready. We can get a public hearing. That's a, that one's not a land use ordinance, so, you know, a week before. And, uh, and get the public hearing set and get those codified and done and then move on.
Can do that. And, and yeah, sorry. Remember the city website does have all of our red lines on all the titles already. So feel free to do all kinds of.
Particularly on those fours.
But we're gonna go right now.
Out of the way.
And we'll watch them pretty close.
What would the next ones be that we do?
We have, I can tell those out yet here. So we'll, as we get through this process, they have lined out the plans to get done by March. It's a pretty rigorous plan, but I think we're on track. So we can give you, give you those titles as well if you want. We need those in advance.
I just like, I'm gonna review that. We don't have to do it at the next meeting in January, but maybe the, the second meeting in January or something, we could talk about those, but I would like to at least start looking at.
We get those nailed up as well. I was just gonna mention planning and zoning, fifteen and sixteen will be taken through tomorrow night as well. Kendall likely is gonna zoom in on that one. We've already had a work session on fifteen and sixteen with the planning and zoning commission and Kendall. So then that'll come to you guys as well. So all the land use, we'll go through that body.
And, and those record, the changes will be recorded. Get them scheduled and get like, like when they were made and just so that we can kind of see what happened and when it happened.
Yep. Yeah. And I liked the discussion we had earlier about changing those policy discussion docs so they're no more useful.
Okay. Okay. I got one other thing. In, in section thirteen, I saw a comment in mine as I'm trying to figure it out. Um, it's a, it's the thirteen point oh four point three five oh metering. And I just brought up a question in my mind, um, under section two, or paragraph two there, meter. In the second paragraph, says it should be unlawful for any person other than a duly authorized employee of public works department. Agents of the city to remove or tamper with any water meter from the city. My comment was, how do we know who is authorized? It seems kind of vague to me.
Yeah.
That especially where it says four authorized agents of the city. And, uh, I just wondered, does the city have a delegation of authority that we use for who's authorized to do what sort of things when it comes to?
Usually it's a licensed plumber that would be allowed to get into our box, you know, other than that, no.
Okay. So authorized, okay. So, okay. Or authorized agents of the city to, I think we need to define what an authorization is. Just kind of maybe clarify who else is. I don't know. It seems su- super vague.
Is it better to have vague? I mean, I, I.
I think, I think it might be better of a little vague because we have a situation where our staff is thick on, otherwise we might need to hire someone.
Or, or even just authorize someone, say, hey, it's your meter box. Get in there and turn it off.
Yeah. I mean, it's a, we're talking about changing circumstance. Typically it's going to be our staff that are certified, but. There might be a situation where we have to call it rural city. It's something, and I'm, you know what they're doing.
Yeah. It's somebody that's with the knowledge. The problem is their councilman is that if they don't know what they're doing on the shut-off valve, they could twist it off. And then you gotta, you know, pretty good water leak and no way to shut it down unless you dig out to the main or crib, you know what I mean? So we want somebody with some knowledge or anybody we give permission to, a licensed plumber or whoever that.
Maybe we could, I don't know, maybe we could clerk by and say, um, this authorized employee of public first department or somebody or, uh, or give an emergency officer. I don't know. Maybe, maybe we just leave it. I don't know. I'm just thinking.
Also in life, you've seen another community go over. That's a good place where I'd like to start is see if another community solved.
Other reason why we have the, I don't know if you can hear me, but another reason why we have a licensed plumber and say, you had a leak at your house. Instead of calling us to come back and forth and forth and back or whatnot, they have a licensed plumber. He troubleshoot the leak or whatever he's fixing. But he's familiar with the setter, the meter and everything that needs to go on, especially getting insulated and prep backup for winter and stuff. So that's kind of why we have a licensed plumber as well because there's times where that customer, it's just more.
it's just more convenient for them instead of having to wait for us. Go back and forth.
Well, the language is good. Okay, yeah, just kind of thinking.
Good thoughts, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, guys.
Did you remember that we did the financials?
That's what I was going to do, do you need to present anything first, Ronan?
Yeah. I, I'm just wanting to give you a quick update on where we're at with Tyler, because I know you probably noticed you haven't been getting regular financials. It's been intense, but we are almost to the end of the life, at the end of, like, the end of the time. Um, you've probably seen the water bills come through, we are now. Tyler, um, we are at present doing our payroll through Tyler, um, we have the financial module on. There's just a lot of moving parts between all of it that have taken a little bit to get those things in place and, um. It has made keeping up with a lot of the reporting, sales tax and different things, we've been a little bit behind on that, but I'm working with the state, and they've been phenomenal to, you know, they've got, they've been patient and they understand the situation, um, and although there could be some penalties, we also have the ability to go in on requests, and we've basically been told that yes, that's valid reason why they would eliminate those, those penalties, but I tell you all of that today, we're hoping by January that we've got everything in place, everybody's working very hard. I've got Taylor and, and Brock and just so many of the staff have been spending a lot of Tyler's hours getting this in place, and we're impressed with, with the functionality of this software, it's a very powerful tool. It's just, that's taken a lot to, to get it in place.
I have a question.
Uh huh.
Just anybody else that received, that used to pay through the automated system that we used to use. We got noticed last time and that would no longer work, and we were able to pay the last bill, but you had to do it manually. I haven't heard anything moving forward, how to set that, could be an auto pay again.
Sunshine has actually put together instructions that are very detailed, QR codes, so that people can very easily get where they need to be. And she's provided step-by-step instructions that will go out with, with the next. Which you shouldn't be seeing anything of.
Sorry, Jonathan, you're very, she's trying to help me out.
Yeah, no problem, thanks, Don, um, so I'll, I'll, the motion to approve the financials is on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my councilman White, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those are approved, uh, several projects, Ron, uh, Ryan. And then get ready, Mr. Baker. A manager report.
Please, I'm here, I'm here. So that's good, but.
You can add yours then while he passed by.
I didn't like this, we wanted to sit next to each other.
It was Josh. No, he was hurrying over, so, go ahead, Ryan.
Um, real quick, I just sent you this packet, my goal is to get it to you quarterly, and hopefully we'll have everything updated on that project, we did add one sheet defining each one, it's kind of basic right now, we're trying to get the kings figured out with Tyler, Ron just helped me out a little bit, but on this chart, that kind of gives you an idea of what the budget is and what we spent on the project and what's remaining. Um, another thing I'd like to add to it is to have a detailed list of what we purchased, so that you guys know what's going on, the activity with the project. Um, besides that, I wanted to go on the website here, Sunshine and I have been working on this, trying to get it up. If I can get feedback to make it better, that's kind of what the goal is here, we want, we want it to be um, very beneficial to the residents and have all the information they need on the object if they have questions. Um, one thing that we added is for volunteer opportunities, I put in a contact information, so if they want to do something with that project, whether it's Eagle Scout projects, surface towers or whatnot, they have someone to contact. And they can get with whoever's on, in charge of that project, so that being said, I do have a question. Um, with your gun range, Mayor, do you want that to be you, or do you want it to be me, or?
Uh, what do you mean?
Contact.
Just to contact someone, oh, they, if they want to.
Oh, okay.
Imagine the information on the project, like, um, for example, the nature market would be, uh, the sports complex, Dustin.
It, it might not hurt, just because, um, you know, Kevin is a range and a whole lot of that, and so I'm closely connected with him, so.
Okay, we just wanted to ask first, because we knew it would be a little sensitive to put your name and number all over the place, so.
It's already out there, I'm telling you. So that's not a big deal, but, but, yeah, that's totally fine, just because we do want to coordinate those things with, with what Kevin has been doing, um, he's he's the other hundred and seventy, by the way, on that project, if you're wondering, but, um.
Yeah.
Well, not him personally, I guess, that you see, there's a lot of people that have donated, so. But either way, and you can have both our names on there if you'd like, but it, it's good just to be aware, you know, just coordinating that, he seems like, I'm, you know what I'm, where I'm going with that.
I do, and, and I think it'll be good, because, uh, residents need, we need to be available for them, and we want to make that streamlined. So.
Yeah.
Um, oh, go ahead.
Never mind, I was just going to say, good job on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah. Even though you did, I love that you have this information up there, if you can see it. That's great.
Just, I'll probably update you on two projects tonight, we're, um, due on time, and then also, there's a lot of activity going on with those two. The ball fields right now is like, they're booming, um, we did have a meeting, emergency meeting last week that we were having some issues with the weather, poor concrete with, um, frost and ground and stuff, so Jones in the mill. Um, kudos to them, stopped them, um, and made it do arise, so they had to start heating and put blankets in, and I tell you that because costs are going to go up just a little, um, we didn't want to stop the project by means, because we have a week like this. So we're already there, and so we feel confident that we're going to still hit our deadline if we keep streaming forward. So there may be a change order in there, if there is, I will, will be the first to know. Um, but the corn concrete conduit is going in, um, the light pole, the bases are all, all of them are in with the soccer. Um, and they poured the entryway in, and mold strips are being done as we speak too, so a lot is happening in ball fields, and, and that's good, it's progress, so. Um, any questions with the sports complex? Okay, and then the innovation hub, I don't know if you've noticed, but we tore apart the library, it looks like, it was terrible. But that's progress too, right? Um, just to kind of keep you informed with that. I've been getting phone calls from Jose almost every day on little things we're finding, and it's just like any other remodel, right? You can find little issues here and there, so we're working them out, and, uh, as a staff, we're, we're, uh, going down there every day and checking on them, so it's going good, um, time for any, actually feels like today, when I spoke with him, mid-January to February, should have that exterior done.
I noticed they were working on Sunday when I drove by. They're working hard.
Yeah, they are, yeah, we did find some termite damage and stuff on the north side of the roof. Um, so we'll have to replace it with that too, so anyhow, that's going good as well, so. Got any questions on innovation?
Thanks for helping you doing.
No, thank you.
Keep it, keep it rolling.
Just asking anytime too, if you want any updates on, one of our, the shares.
Thanks, Ryan, thanks.
Fifteen seconds, we got a little bit of air, pizza tomorrow night, five thirty, winter celebration, five thirty, five thirty, five thirty. Emily's sweater, Montez, yes, at the bike ready, um, we'll try to be even out of there in an hour, yeah, here we go. Last thing, I just want to say is, we do have that, you guys approved for the funding for that thing, but just keep in mind, we have a month until we're opening the budget. It does give you a month to seek out any for grand opportunities and get a hold of six, um, CIB, so there's a possibility of moving to the end of the program, if I can.
Thank you.
That's a record.
That's true.
Um, do we have any committee reports of the council? All right, seeing that, we do have a quick closed session, uh, meeting for, uh, possible property acquisition or property.
And then we go into closed session to discuss property acquisition.
There we have a motion in a second, um. Roll call out, Councilman Boozmark.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Flower.
Aye.
We'll move into closed session. We'll move into closed session.